The man who champions bicycling more than this Angelino, Alex Baum. Anna Marcos tells us how the city repaid his efforts and contributions on his 90th birthday.
Alex Baum may have exchanged his former bike for a walking cane. But on this, his 90th birthday, the king of all things bicycle gets honored for putting L.A. on the map of bike-friendly cities. This bridge on the bike path off Los Feliz Boulevard was already named for him. But after this ceremony, there is now a plaque and a picture of Baum for all to see.
Alex Baum was the first big advocate for bikes in Los Angeles. So this bridge is special. We rededicate it.
He is why we are here. He is why cycling in the city of Los Angeles has progressed to where it is. We're now designated as a bicycle-friendly city.
Baum helped create L.A.'s Bicycle Advisory Committee, a citizens group that advocates on bicycle issues. He put together L.A.'s Bicycle Plan. He helped bring the Olympics to L.A. in 1984, and so much more.
He made it instrumental in getting us a bicycle program and having bike officers on bicycles and helped us develop the training.
So, looking back on his 90 years, why did he do it?
I was born, living in France, where we bike all the time, and been involved in the sport of cycling all my life, so I got interested.
Happy Birthday dear Alex! Happy Birthday to you!
Not bad for a man who, together with his brother, survived the Nazi concentration camp and went on to ride his way through history on two wheels. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
Baum was also the first American ever appointed to the International Board of Directors, the governing body for world bicycle competition, and he served on the board of the U.S. Cycling Federation for many years. Well, in addition to making Los Angeles more bike-friendly, the city is also ramping up work on various public transit projects, including a light rail project located in the heart of the city. Cindy San Luis has the details.
You know, since my first day on the job, people have been asking, no, demanding, a 21st-century transportation system here in L.A.
And a big step toward that goal is underway as workers relocate existing underground telecommunications lines to make way for the Regional Connector, a major light rail project in downtown Los Angeles.
We're resetting L.A.'s reputation. Some used to say we were the land of the freeway and the Range Rover, but we're well on our way to becoming a mecca of 21st-century transit culture.
Once completed, the Regional Connector will connect the Gold Line, Blue Line, and Expo Line. While the connector is a short, two-mile project, the mayor says it will have a great impact for the city's 88,000 daily metro commuters.
Once it's completed, it will allow for a one-seat ride from East L.A., where I was raised, to Santa Monica, where I used to ride my bike almost 50 years ago.
The project is funded through voter-approved Measure R, which commits a projected $40 billion in traffic relief and transportation upgrades throughout the county over the next 30 years.
No longer will riders from Long Beach have to transfer at 7th Street just to get the extra two miles to Union Station. Nor will Lakewood friends from Pasadena have to change trains to get to the Staples Center.
Passengers will have access to three new stations in downtown at First and Central, Second and Broadway, and at Second and Hope. The $1.3 billion project will also improve 11 intersections, which will see less congestion. I'm Cindy San Luis for L.A. this week.
The project, if fully funded, could open in 2019. For more information about the Regional Connector project, visit metro.net/regionalconnector. Well, if you own a small business, you probably have a website to go with it. However, that's not the case for a majority of Hispanic-owned small businesses. As Gil Reyes explains, the search engine Google aims to help minority business owners get online.
Venice salon owner Marcela Gabriel is one of hundreds of small business owners, learning how to build a website to stay competitive.
I need to grow my business. It's a difficult time.
She and others taking advantage of Google's Get Your Business Online campaign. It's targeting small Hispanic-owned businesses. That's because an estimated 57% of them in California don't have websites. The course, available online, is free. So is your new website for its first full year. The reason to give L.A.'s small businesses a much-needed boost, the mayor says their success will help deliver Los Angeles from this dismal economy.
It's important that those companies have the tools to grow, that they have the tools to make their businesses more successful.
Get started by logging on to GYBO, short for GetYourBusinessOnline.com. You could have a three-page website with video links up and running within minutes.
Less than five minutes. They help you. It's a great, great program.
The course is available in English and Spanish. In downtown L.A., Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
Your new website will be free for the first year. After that, it'll cost around $7 a month to maintain. Get started by logging on to GYBO.com for a course in English, or GYBO.com/Español for Spanish. The Los Angeles Quality and Productivity Commission recently held its annual awards ceremony honoring city departments that go above and beyond despite limited resources. Yana Kay has more.
This is the Los Angeles Business Assistance Virtual Network, a free online service offered by the city for vendors and contractors to learn about potential opportunities to do business with the city. And now, thanks to the Information Technology Agency, or ITA, the site has become more user-friendly and efficient.
We were able to reduce a lot of the paperwork. The vendors are able to upload their online documents, so they can get their legal documents loaded and registered. It gave an opportunity for many of the city departments to be able to share resources.
For this kind of innovative thinking, the ITA was one of 14 city departments to receive a quality and productivity award this year. The awards honor city departments that are able to thrive and operate while reducing costs.
It does reward creativity. It does reward initiative, and it really is a bottom-up celebration.
The Quality and Productivity Awards not only acknowledge those departments that are able to save money, but the awards also focus on those projects that are able to address customer service and quality of life issues. The Bureau of Sanitation from the Department of Public Works was recognized with nine awards, one for developing a way to analyze water in a more efficient way.
So basically, we're combining the analysis of two instruments into one instrument. So it saved us time and staff, and, you know, we're trying to do more with less.
The Department of Building and Safety also received an award for cutting red tape and making it easier to obtain building permits.
We have about seven departments sitting in one office, helping you to get your permit.
Helping Angelinos by providing them with useful services that make life easier. That's what these awards are all about. I'm Yana Kay for L.A. this week.
A total of 27 Quality and Productivity Awards were handed out. And a local organization also gave out awards, this time to honor the accomplishments of area public works departments, including our very own Department of Public Works. Cindy San Luis takes us to Lakewood, where the awards ceremony was held.
Members belonging to the Southern California Chapter of American Public Works Association filled the ballroom at the center at Sycamore Plaza in Lakewood for the chapter's 12th Annual Awards Luncheon. The organization's goal: to highlight the accomplishments of public works departments and their employees.
This is the best of our industry this year. It's the kind of projects we like to see moving forward to improve the infrastructure in our communities.
29 outstanding public works projects were highlighted at this year's luncheon, with three of them coming out of the city of Los Angeles. One of them, the Living Amphibians, Invertebrates &amp; Reptiles, or Lair Exhibition at the L.A. Zoo, is the only project of its kind built in the city of Los Angeles since 1964.
It's a pretty complicated building in that it has to provide life support for a number of different reptiles and amphibians and a few invertebrates. It's got a green roof, which makes it also a very unique structure in the city, and it's bringing people to the zoo every day.
Another city of L.A. project recognized is the Fred Roberts Recreation Center New Gymnasium.
It's about a 10,000-square-foot gym plus a 2,500-square-foot annex, building to replace the old and outdated gym and recreation center buildings at Fred Roberts. The facility serves upwards of 150 to 200 kids almost every day, both indoor and outdoor activities.
Following the destruction of the lawn at City Hall during Occupy L.A., half an acre of the north lawn was renovated in the midst of a budget crisis, made possible through the collaboration of a number of city agencies.
Instead of putting the lawn back as it was, just to save water and be a little more environmentally sensitive, we decided to replace it with native plants instead of with lawn.
Cities and private sectors submitted nominations for projects to be recognized.
We know some people went away, you know, empty-handed, but, you know, the great projects anyway. We need them all here in Southern California.
And this event underscores the importance of public works in daily life. From the center at Sycamore Plaza in Lakewood, I'm Cindy San Luis for L.A. this week.
And over at the Los Angeles Police Department, the men and women in uniform who put their lives on the line daily to protect the public were also recognized. Here's Anita Bennett.
As their friends, colleagues, and family members watched with pride, 74 LAPD officers, dispatchers, and volunteers were honored during the department's recognition awards at the Police Administration Building in downtown L.A.
For distinguishing themselves for going beyond the call of duty, along with quick and decisive actions, the department is proud to award the Life Saving Medal to Officer Susan Garcia.
It's nice to know that people out there notice what we do and that it's not always with a negative stigma, so it's really nice.
Chief Charlie Beck handed out the awards.
You know, the Los Angeles Police Department has great traditions, and one of the greatest traditions is that we recognize people who go above and beyond, who do what is so difficult.
Now, the recipients are volunteers, as well as members of eight different divisions of the LAPD, including Southeast, where officers rescued the victims of a hostage situation.
Just seeing the hostages tied up, that's what we... Of course, it really sets into your mind where, okay, this is the real deal, and you just react from there on.
Another officer received the Life Saving Medal for rushing to help an unconscious baby.
Having six children of my own, it didn't take long before I jumped into action, just like treating it like it was one of my children.
Now, these local heroes and volunteers are being treated to a day in the spotlight for their outstanding service. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Anita Bennett for L.A. this week.
The LAPD holds recognition ceremonies several times each year. But all this Thanksgiving and handshaking gives way as L.A.'s public safety officials get competitive, as they battle to see who can donate the most blood. The Seventh Annual Battle of the Badges pits the L.A. Police Department against the L.A. Fire Department in a fight to save lives.
Every two seconds, someone in the United States needs a transfusion. And always, there's a critical blood shortage after the holidays. It's a great opportunity for the Los Angeles Fire Department and the Los Angeles Police Department to impact that shortage.
And this is just one way for two great organizations to come together, make a statement about what's important, and do something good for people.
The Battle for Bragging Rights will take place from January 16th to February 16th, and everyone's invited. For donation sites and other info, log on to RedCrossBattleOfTheBadges.org. And LAX takes part in this year's Tournament of Roses Parade with the spectacular float, an art exhibit about life on the streets of Boyle Heights and making L.A.'s most dangerous crosswalks safer. These stories and more in City Beat.
A total of 53 intersections with the highest number of vehicle pedestrian collisions in the city will be upgraded by March to improve pedestrian safety and reduce accidents and fatalities. The new crosswalk design will focus on providing higher visibility and increasing the setback limit line to better prevent cars from encroaching into the crosswalk.
The Continental Crosswalk, as it's called, features wide stripes of wider yellow paint to make it clear to motorists that they're entering pedestrian territory.
The average cost will be $2,500 per crosswalk improvement. The upgrades will be funded through the city's Measure R funds set aside for pedestrian improvements. If you watched the Tournament of Roses Parade on New Year's Day, then you likely caught L.A. Tourism and Los Angeles World Airport's float showcasing the new LAX terminal. The float, seen here in a rendering, was created with more than 7,000 fragrant roses and nearly 5,000 carnations. The float, entitled Making Connections, replicates the $1.5 billion new Tom Bradley International Terminal opening this year. The float also showcased the airport's multicolored pylons, the iconic theme building, as well as a street sign that contains all of 25 of L.A.'s sister cities. No taxpayer funds were used for the float. Otis College of Art and Design's Ben Maltz Gallery is presenting a group exhibition titled Bridging Homeboy Industries. The exhibit features work from three artists who share roots in Boyle Heights and who have benefited from the services of Homeboy Industries, which helps formerly gang-involved individuals find employment. The director of galleries and exhibitions at Otis says the artists were former graffiti artists who later turned their lives around and pursued a career in art. The exhibit will be on view through March 23rd. Priscilla Recreation Center on Victory Boulevard has a new playground. The playground, which cost around $207,000, was built with cost savings from the newly renovated pool and bathhouse that came under budget.
It was a little rundown before, and now it's a nice place to come play. Everything's nice and new and clean, and much more functional than it was previously.
The playground has a slew of amenities such as shade structures, a drinking fountain, a rubberized surface, six swings, and three slides.
Disadvantaged youth in the city of Angels are getting a leg up on a brighter future with the opening of the new YWCA campus. Anna Marcos takes us to South L.A. for the ribbon cutting.
Celebratory cheers fill the air as this community greets the grand opening of the new YWCA urban campus. The YWCA runs job corps training programs aimed at giving at-risk young people a shot at jobs. But now, this campus in South L.A. also gives them a place to learn and to live, with state-of-the-art classrooms and dorms.
People deserve an education, no matter where they're from, who they are.
It's about giving people second chances. It's about opportunities. It's about reaching out and saying, you know what? I believe in you, and you can reach for the stars and follow your dreams.
The biggest standing ovation is reserved for Fay Washington, the force behind the $70 million project.
I have the soul of every young person in this place, and it's a soul that says, if you need, and I have it, then it's yours.
It was many years ago that Fay came to my office in Washington, D.C., and said that she had this dream of building this place where young people could come and could develop their skills, to give them a second chance, to give them hope in a better future.
The YWCA helps about 1,200 at-risk young people a year. That's 1,200 more at-risk youth who can now move on to better futures. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
In this week's list of things to do, visiting the L.A. Zoo in 2013. A lecture all about mid-century modern, and what's better than watching Mary Poppins for free at the museum?
The UCLA Film and Television Archive and the Hammer Museum have teamed up for a matinee screening series of new and classic family-friendly films from around the world. And on Sunday, January 13th at 11:00 a.m., you can catch the Disney classic Mary Poppins at the Hammer Museum, located at 10899 Wiltshire Boulevard. Tickets are free and available at the box office, one ticket per person on a first-come, first-served basis. Arrival at least a half hour prior to program time is recommended. Go to hammer.ucla.edu for more information. And we're promoting this event a little bit early, as the Los Angeles Public Library's Allowed Lecture Series events tend to sell out quickly. On Thursday, January 17th at 7:15 p.m., join a panel discussion on architecture, photography, and the good life in Cold War California. The talk, titled Mid-Century Modern, will center around the hugely influential photographer Maynard L. Parker, who aimed his lens at the mid-century masterworks of the L.A. architects and designers whose homes embodied the American dream. The event will be held at the Central Library's Mark Taper Auditorium, located at 630 West 5th Street. Go to lfla.org/allowed for details. And 2012 was a banner year for the Los Angeles Zoo, which boasted nearly 1.6 million visitors. And in 2013, visitors will be able to see some new additions, including 15 baby ghosts and a colobus monkey born on December 21st. Found throughout the forests of Central Africa, the colobus is one of the most striking primates in the animal kingdom. If you didn't get a chance to visit last year, put that on your New Year's resolution. For more information on the zoo and its exhibits, go to lazo.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook.
There are heroes among us. They don't fly, or bend steel, or ride off into the sunset. They simply volunteer to look after someone else's health by providing comfort, lending a hand, or simply keeping us on track. Everyone's health needs a hero. Who will you look out for?
Find out how you can participate in improving our health.
G'day. Troy McCavan from North Hollywood. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Los Angeles City Council meeting. Today's date is Tuesday, January 8th, 2013. The Los Angeles City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. My name is Herb Weston. I'll be your presiding officer today. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Alacon Buscagino, Englander, Garcetti, Weisar, Kresker, Corian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zion, Weston. Eleven members present in the quorum. Mr. President.
Okay, next item of bill, or first item of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves. Mr. Parks, seconds. Next.
Communitary resolutions for approval.
Buscagino moves. Mr. Englander, seconds. Next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now would be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, if I could ask everyone in council chambers to please rise for our flag salute, which will be led by Mr. Tom Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. We ask all in the John Farrowe Chambers to please rise, if we would, and stand as we face the flag. Place your hand over your heart. All, please join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. At this point in time, we can begin to go through the agenda. Madam Clerk, if you could go through the first section.
Item one, our liens known as for public hearing. There are cards on this item.
Okay, then we'll hold that.
Robert is working to try to resolve this. Continue one week, Mr. President.
And that date, Madam Clerk, would be when?
One week is January 14th, 15th.
Okay, so without objection, that item will be continued. Next.
And just for clarification, Mr. President, that is item 1A. That is continued for Jan— to January 15th.
Okay, so then let's— was what? Item 1A, the item that was held special by cards?
Item 1A is the one that Councilman Labange just continued to January 15th. Item 1B should be held for cards.
Okay, so let's hold item 1B. Ms. Perry?
Sorry, I jumped the gun. I was gonna call two special.
Okay, so let's go to the next set of items. Madam Clerk.
Items 2, 3, 11 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, Ms. Perry? Item 2?
Two.
This whole item 2 special for Ms. Perry?
Oh, and the 11. Item 11.
And item 11. Members, any other specials? Members, any other specials? Okay, Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, next.
Items 12 through 16 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us.
For item 14, Mr. President, there is a request by member to refer this matter back to the Ad Hoc Committee on Economic Development and Structure.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order. Do you have any cards on the remaining items?
Cards on items 12, 13, 15, and 16.
Okay, is there anything left that we can vote on?
No, not in this section.
Okay, Mr. Reyes.
It's Council President, item 19 from last Friday's agenda. Could we hear that today? I think it's continued for today's agenda, 19, for Friday.
Wait, did we continue item 19 last week?
For today.
Is—I don't see it on the— Clerk, I don't see it on the agenda.
Have it reconsidered. I apologize.
So what is the process, Mr. City Attorney? Is that a problem?
Well, the mover has to identify the item number from Friday, its council file number, and a brief statement as to what the subject matter is.
So why don't you, Mr. Reyes, put that information together? And then, before we finish today, we will reconsider it.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's my understanding we have no presentations from the public today so that we can proceed with what's on the agenda? So what would be the first item, Madam Clerk?
Item 1, call special for cards. Item 1B.
Okay, that is now before us, and that was held special by Mr. Murphy, Sean Murphy, and John Walsh. Happy New Year, Sean.
Happy New Year to you, Mr. President. Item 1, I am against all liens. It's not good for the city. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Sean. Mr. Walsh? John Walsh, blogging in Hollywood, Highlands.org. Last time I was here, 4,000 requests. Keep throwing me out. 4,000 the day you sent— threw me out. And this is item 1. We're very happy. We think the mayor—we want to salute the mayor in this issue of building and safety. I think building and safety is doing a good job. HollywoodHighlands.org. Go to TMZ now and put in Vierigosa and see what you get. Okay, on this item now, we go to Ms. Perry? This is item 1B?
No, I wanted two.
Right? Oh, okay. Ms. Perry? Oh, you're up for two? Okay, your name appeared. Mr. Alacon.
Okay, Council— Mr. President, I understand building safety is working with the owner of this property, trying to make some arrangements. So if we could hold this matter for one week, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, let's continue that item for one week. Madam Clerk, the date on that would be?
January 15th.
Okay, so without objection, we'll hold that item. And we're being joined by Bill Rosendahl. Bill, good to see you, and happy new year to you. So that brings us where?
Item 2, call special by Councilman Perry.
Ms. Perry, now it's for you.
On number 2.
Item 2.
Okay, great. I wanted to ask—we just reviewed Mr. Stephen P. Reniker in Information Technology Committee and made a recommendation for his approval. He has a very interesting background. He's a former city employee who's spent time in the private sector and for the city of Riverside and rose through the ranks there. One of the questions I put to him, and I'd like for him to share with you, is, given our fiscal situation, how did he see—what's his vision for managing a department with the resources that he has now, understanding that they may not grow, that he may not be able to hire more people, and to put that in context of what his vision is, given the challenges that he will face?
Yes, sir.
Honorable President and City Council, it's a pleasure to be here today and an honor to be recommended for the position of General Manager. I understand that the ITA with the budget issues is going through some serious times. And certainly, the things that I would focus on, obviously taking a look at maintenance contracts, making some cuts there. The department is going through an effort of a strategic plan. Certainly look forward to helping execute many portions of that. Also looking forward to working with the staff and a lot of the new projects that are coming forward in the department to really take a look at making the city more technology responsible from the standpoint of the website and potentially mobile apps, and giving our citizens here, Angelenos, the capability to not stand in line but go online for their services. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have on the queue Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, I appreciated you saying online services. We're living in a new age, obviously, and the more we function within that efficiently, the more effective we'll be. How do you see all the departments interacting with you so we all get on the same page?
Well, it's absolutely critical. Certainly, we've got to bridge those relationships. It's not going to be an individual effort. It's got to be a— an effort of all the departments coming together and working closely together to make that realization possible. So that will be my primary objective, is bridging those gaps and making sure we work as a cohesive agency.
Tell me about your management experience in that regard.
So I've—I've been Chief Information Officer for at least four other government agencies. One, one being the county of Riverside, which had responsibility for close to 600 IT professionals. Three of those—300 of those actually sat in a decentralized organizations, other departments. And it's absolutely critical to work together to set the standards, to make sure that we're all working cohesively, sharing the same maintenance contracts, leveraging the buying powers that we can have collectively. And that's what I will seek to do here at the city of Los Angeles.
Will you keep us posted from time to time as to the progress you're making on integrating the various departments into one operation that works more efficiently and effectively? Could you come back every few months, every three months, give us an update?
I'd look forward to that.
Good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Englander.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
I sort of look at this position as one of the most important positions of a general manager function in the entire city of Los Angeles, is connecting the people to their government and making it easier and accessible and efficient. Certainly is critically important, and creating a digital city initiative is something that is long overdue here in the city of Los Angeles. Are you still in the current position you're in now at—in Riverside?
No, I'm not. I retired right before Thanksgiving.
We're pulling you out of retirement?
That I am.
All right, well, your resume is certainly impressive. I won't hit you on the objective to—that starts off to a position of leadership in a private sector position. Well, we're not—certainly not private sector, but we have the challenges cut out for us. What are some of the immediate things you would do in your first few months to try to gauge and figure out where we're at, where we're lacking, what our needs are? There hasn't really been an inventory, if you will, or analysis citywide holistically in figuring out, because all these different proprietary departments with their own systems that don't integrate with each other, and they don't communicate with each other. And they've been built decades ago, and we constantly throw money at them just to keep them going, but they're really outdated and obsolete. What would you—what are the first steps you see yourself taking in this position to figure that out?
The first steps—and I've already taken a look at the inventory of many of the applications, so it's a little bit dated, but I know you have a little over 1,500 applications that are out there, both custom off-the-shelf and custom developed. First thing I would do is prioritize all of those. Take a look at those that are costing the city the most money, maybe those that are most obsolete, maybe those that aren't providing the best customer service for citizens of this community, Angelenos. And focus only on the top 25. And that's typically the way I work, is just focus on 25 in every given month, educate all the departments, that that'll be the strategy and the focus and the prioritization that all the employees of the department will work on. Deliver quality results, more timely results, and continue to refresh and get those that are most critical into that top 25 list.
And have you—have you been brought up to speed on some of the current issues we've grappled with as well? Where we can't even talk to departments like email, where you've got—LAPD is still on an antiquated group mail system, where the rest of the city's on a Google system, and there's issues of security. There's been a lot of controversy around some major initiatives that have cost a lot of money to keep those things going as well.
I am familiar with that. I know that there are efforts to do a strategic plan and comprehensive study to understand what the issues are of all the departments. I look forward to seeing the results and help execute on those.
Great. And then, last thing is, in terms of online access and web capability and allowing people to get those kinds of, whether it's services or payments or projects, tracking items, that's how I see a city, quite frankly, is where nowadays you can order a pizza online or a pair of shoes, and you get a tracking order on everything you do, and it tells you when it's loaded onto the truck, when the pizza's being cut, when the shoes are going to be on your doorstep. That's the kind of city that I'd like to see us go into that direction, where those folks, our residents and businesses, can get a tracking number and a disposition of their requested item and find out exactly where things are at all the time. Is that something you would see, a major initiative that you would lead as well?
Absolutely. That'll be in the top of the list, is really take a look at the website, the way it is today. It's in my understanding that there's already efforts underway to deliver a brand-new lacity.org website here in the next few months, and I'm excited to see that, and we'll grow it quickly beyond that as well.
Sure, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say how important you are. Information is knowledge is power, and if we're to use that, your job is so important to get the team moving in the right direction. There's many people very committed. 3-1-1 system is so important. The operators are 3-1-1, and I hope, members in our budget, we could try to find a way to expand the hours and articulate those issues. In addition to that, around the city, I would like to see a partnership in the libraries, if at all possible, where there could be an information center. I don't—was there—let's ask for PAT. Was PAT—was that one of those standalones one where, where you'd go up and you'd ask a question, you know? And we could try to develop that, to give that to the people. And this is the only one real big bad complaint, and I'll find the money to do it. When you're on hold, when you call 3-1-1, the music's no good. Okay? The music is no good, no—no—it's not as fitting as we should be. And I'll get you a playlist of great Los Angeles music, from Chuck Berry to Sheryl Crowe, to all of them. And I want you to look at that and then come back to me and say, okay, it costs $20,000. I'll raise the money. Because there's a lot of great songs written about L.A. from Randy Newman on down that should be on hold. So if you—if you tell me you'll do that for me, at least give me the opportunity in the next 30 days, I'll vote for you.
I'll certainly take a look at it.
Okay, I'll vote for you. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Alacon.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Congratulations on your nomination.
Thank you.
The one thing that has been most frustrating to—to me as a council member is that the city and its IT department have not been able to—to provide the council members with a constituent services that is reflective of high technology. These devices are being used all over the country, and there's a variety of—of applications that—we could use to quickly communicate with our constituents, particularly on—on specific complaints, like graffiti or whatever. So I just wanted to know whether you have any thoughts or ideas on how to quickly implement that program. Now, two council members, Councilmember Garcetti and Councilmember Krikorian, have created their own constituent services programs and have implemented it. Now, they're both different. One was created by a staff member, another was contracted out. And it seems to me we should have one system that we could easily use to—to provide greater service to our constituents, and frankly, save time so that we could do other important work. So anyway, I just wanted to get your thoughts on what—are you knowledgeable about the department working on, and—any ideas you have on how to empower our city council members with the ability to better serve their constituents with simple iPod or iPad uses?
Well, I agree with you 100%. And I have talked briefly with the Assistant General Manager and the current General Manager of the ITA. I know there are steps already in place to fully automate 3-1-1. I think that'll be done in short order. I know the products that they're looking at. I know they're state-of-the-art. I know where I came from. We fully integrated 3-1-1 with mobile apps, and also did the integration out into the departmental systems. So when calls come in for, say, graffiti, creates automatic work order, goes to the individuals even in the field so that they can be abated, and also collect that information so that police and the city attorney's office can then use that to potentially go after the individuals and families that are creating those kind of issues. So that's an example of what can be done. I think the city of L.A. in short order is ready to go to the next level, and I look forward to being part of that and implementing that here.
Okay, with all due respect, that doesn't answer my question. My question is about city council members providing services to their constituents. The constituents don't want—to want to go through a myriad of—of steps to find the department that provides a particular kind of service. They just want to contact their council members, say, hey, we got a tree that needs to be trimmed, we got a trash that needs to be bulky itemed. They don't even know that it's called bulky item, a pickup for a sofa that's thrown on the street. They just call their council member, and—my staff typically will—will call the department, but they could do it on their iPhone.
Right.
And that's what I'm talking about. We don't have a program for that, and—it's being done throughout the country. Two council members have done it on their own, and I'm just wondering when IT is going to do it for us.
It's my understanding that in very short order, they will have a mobile app for 3-1-1, and the 3-1-1 will be a constituent complaint type of system that will allow individuals from the public to be the—
I don't want that. That's not what I'm talking about.
Okay.
I'm talking about serving—taking care of council members. You're a general manager—you want to be a general manager. Take care of your—your primary constituents are your council members. They want to serve their constituents. That's what I'm talking about. I need you—I think you need to get up to speed very quickly. I need you, I think you need to get up to speed very quickly on what I'm talking about, whether you go to Google, whether you go to whoever you go to out there, they've all got these applications, we got to pick one and implement it.
I agree with you.
Okay. Mr. Reyes.
Well, congratulations. I understand that City of Riverside, where you were the Chief Enforcement Officer, was acknowledged as one of the, I guess, intelligent or smartest communities?
Most intelligent community in the world.
In the world. Now, that's saying a lot. Now, given Councilman Alacon's observations and comments, and given the nature of the second-largest city in this country, what do you see as a priority coming in, given the experience and accomplishments that you've already excelled in?
I think the top agenda items clearly will be 3-1-1 and the mobile app associated with it. We'll also be enhancing the website so that we provide better access to all of our services here electronically and via mobile apps. Also will be public safety, ensuring that our public safety systems have the highest reliability, zero downtime, if possible, and ensuring that we refresh those systems so that our fire and police officers have the best technology available to them. And then some of the things that aren't glamorous but need to be done is the core things that I have a lot of expertise in, and that's infrastructure. It's making sure that we have high-speed fiber to our city facilities, we're reducing costs, and we're doing things in a cost-efficient manner.
So in this day and age of cutbacks, we've seen the staff dwindling in numbers. We see more urgencies because of the time lapses to get responses, to get offices running. Have you factored in the volume of work in the context of these cutbacks?
I think the best way to do it is prioritize and work on those things that have the biggest return on investment, and that will be where the largest expenditures are being made, trying to refresh that technology, replace it, or even just sunset it. And that will be my focus, and that's really where I take a look at initially my first 30 days, figuring out the top 25 initiatives that will meet that objective and work as hard as I can to get those done, and continually bring in those that can provide revenue generation, cost avoidance, or cost cutting, in order to try to make sure that we can maintain the level of service and the resources that we currently have.
And my last question is one in which the demographics of the city are very complex. You have a large Spanish-speaking population, you've got the largest other languages from all over the world, populations that are second to the capitals of many countries. So the diversity here is profound. Is the language issue and how we address that issue a variable that you're at least putting into your formula as you go through this analysis?
It absolutely will be. I mean, I certainly look to all you as far as to provide what language types that we want via the systems that we serve, but certainly, I come from a city where 50% of our population is all Hispanic, Spanish-speaking, so I certainly understand those issues and look forward to addressing that here at the city of Los Angeles as well.
Well, as my last six months, I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
And hopefully share what experience we do have as we conclude our experience as council members. So look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Garcetti. Let's switch to Mr. Zine, and then we'll go to Mr. Garcetti. So, Mr. Zine.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I had an opportunity to speak with you earlier before we started council, some of your experience and your commitment to the public in the area of information-based technology. This is a transition with the current General Manager, Gary Lee Moore, and I want to acknowledge Gary Lee Moore, who's been the city engineer and also managing information-based technology. He was wearing two hats at the same time. Thanks to Mark, he kept Gary Lee Moore going forward, so thank you for that. The cable, we have the cable operation here, Channel 35 broadcasts, the city council meetings, activities throughout this region. Do you have any relationship with the cable industry when it comes to governmental and the interaction between government and the cable industry?
Yes, I do. I'm familiar with the franchises, the PAC funds, and also helped develop that program at the city of Riverside.
Does it work there, as well as it works here?
I don't know. I would say that you guys do a pretty good job here at the city of Los Angeles.
I think it works well. We get good compliments from the folks, and it's amazing how many people actually view Channel 35. The technology changes, technology keeps changing, and as we know, it advances, and oftentimes, a smaller municipality, a smaller region, can have the funds to make those modifications. And we're obviously having some difficulties when it comes to the budget. How do you see that working when we want to move forward? How do you see that working when we don't have the funds to really make these advances that you'd wish to see as a general manager?
Specifically as it relates to the cable channel?
Well, general, IT in general, not only the cable channel, but IT in general.
Well, I think the challenge there is really to try to take a look at where we're spending the monies today, and trying to figure out if there's better investments that can reduce those costs and reinvest those into newer technologies, and that will be my primary focus.
Because it does keep on changing, as we know.
That's correct.
With the advancement. And the citywide Wi-Fi, we now have free Wi-Fi at LAX, it took a while to get that there. What's your view of a citywide Wi-Fi program?
It's complex. I mean, certainly, I come from a city where we blanketed the entire city with free Wi-Fi, one of the few left in the United States. I would love to entertain that and try to figure out if there's a way to do that here, but the costs are roughly about $250,000 to $300,000 for this type of density here in Los Angeles to do that per square mile, but the return on that can be significant, particularly for low-income families that can't afford it.
And maybe a public-private partnership, is something in that arena to help?
Absolutely.
Foster that. Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Veniker. Did you already do the joke on AOL?
No, I didn't.
Okay. Somebody said, anybody who still keeps an AOL address, we got to make sure that gets updated, but I love it, it's actually retro, so you can, so I appreciate that you've stayed true to an old email address. But I wanted to just ask you a couple of things. The side of this job that is about the sharing outward of information, because I think we've covered some good things about the technology inward, and I'll have a number of private conversations with you about, I think, the way that we could help elevate this, and Mr. Alacon, Perry, and others who have overseen this area, I think, want to make sure that this is elevated up to a true chief technology officer, it's a sort of position, which right now, I can understand why departments have guarded their technology because they don't trust that we'll be able to do it comprehensively, but we have to kind of take the jump together if we're going to do this as a city. But the sharing of information, the second part, the CIO part of this job, I wanted to ask you what your thoughts are in terms of what we can do to daylight and to share data, and also share kind of communications from our city through ITA, in two ways. One, you know, whether it's the, like you were talking about, the development of apps, we've got a really great programmer community out there right now that wants to help the city, that's, you know, worked with us on apps to get constituent services complaints about potholes or graffiti, that have looked at parking apps through the Department of Transportation, things like that. But a lot of times, they say, well, we just need the city data. And we've got the greatest platform because we have a monopoly of a market share, but we don't have very good apps. Because other people have good apps, but they don't have any market share, so we could marry these two together. But some of that requires a conscious effort of sharing our city's data outward in terms of what we have and how people can do hackathons and other things to help move forward those apps. So that first. And then, second, in terms of looking at the model in the future of what we're going to communicate outward, when we had cuts to, you know, Channel 35, we still have the idea of the city being able to have a great platform. YouTube, for instance, just invested a quarter billion dollars in Playa Vista in Mr. Rosendahl's district to set up studios there that are a different kind of studio. They're not quite public access, but they're channels that are very lean, very cheap, on sports, on cooking, on all these kinds of things. But to develop potentially a YouTube channel for Los Angeles, I think would be a great way for us to be able to tell stories. People are producing content all the time, we could vet it, doesn't cost us much, one person to kind of see that, and then run that, and that's getting sometimes more eyeballs than what we would have through the cable system as well. So thoughts kind of on external communications, what we could possibly do through that side of ITA, and then on the technology side, what we might be able to do with sharing data more to develop solutions and platforms to our challenges in the city?
Okay. Well, to address your question on integration, sharing of data, the two things there, I view it as internal and external. The biggest thing you can do on the inside is invest in a platform for application integration. There's application integration products that, once you build them, you don't have to build those interfaces every single time, and it makes it easy for, so for example, you have 3-1-1, if you implement application integration with that, and you link that to all the systems in the departments, then you can electronically create these work orders that keep the 3-1-1 system up to date on whether the item's been closed or not. So that would be one area of focus internally of sharing of data, would be through application integration. Externally, and dealing with hackathons and things of that nature, what I view is critical in a lot of the cities around, like San Francisco, one of the first to deliver open data interchange. So you develop this ODI layer, which basically what it does is we, as a city, identify what is the data the citizens want, and we identify, let's say, 10 data sets, we make those available on the website, and then you can have the colleges around here, the students, graduates, maybe even entrepreneurs, take a look at these data sets, and it's amazing what they can come up with in developing these mobile apps that may be productive tools that don't cost the city of Los Angeles a dime. And so those are the things that I think we can work towards, and certainly as we revamp our website, based on what you, the city council, allow to be on our website, those are things that I would work to bring forward here and try to implement. The latter question?
YouTube.
The YouTube, what I would take a look at is all the programming content that's already available on the website, and as it's shown and programmed onto the cable channel, that at the same time, you create the YouTube channel, and you put all those programs in high definition through YouTube. That's what a lot of cities are already doing out there, is you have it in two places because they can watch it online in real time, or they can always go on YouTube and play it anytime that they want to. Thank you.
Ms. Perry to close. Ms. Perry to close.
All right, right. Okay. So after much discussion this morning in committee, I would like to recommend that we approve this candidate and move forward with a unanimous vote.
Okay. With that said, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay. Next, I want to move to, we're going to break things up and do some general public comment cards. I'd like to call forward Daniel Gus, followed by Sean Murphy. This is on general public comment. Daniel Gus, followed by Sean Murphy.
Thank you, Council President. First, a quick congratulations to Eric Garcetti for being endorsed by California Now. Congratulations on that. See, I can be honest. Congratulations, Eric. No Kill December, does anybody care to guess how many animals were killed during No Kill December? No Kill December, LA Animal Services killed 756 dogs and cats and more than 100 other animals. So almost 900 animals were killed during No Kill December, which is comparable to the kill rates for Decembers in the past and Decembers before Brenda Barnett was hired. So Brenda Barnett spends all of her December telling the local media that we didn't kill any animals except almost 900 were killed. So while she's telling that to the media, every day, animal rescues get a red list alert which says animals on this list are in danger of being euthanized within 48 hours. So you're telling the media there's no kill, and you're telling the rescuers you're going to kill all of these animals within 48 hours. Those are mutually exclusive, and it's a sham. It's a sham for a media play. Hercules was killed, Lacey was killed, Bella was killed, Minarte was killed, Kyla was killed, Soho, Brownie, Canela, and what about these animals in here who have no photos and no names? How come they can't take a minute to give the dog or cat a photo in the kill lists and give the dog or cat a name? In the meantime, you're telling the media one thing, and you're killing animals. The Best Friends Shelter in the Valley is stuffed with cat crates. Floor to ceiling, they're stuffed with cat crates. The South LA Shelter has so many animals in the kennels, there's not enough kibble, so they're attacking each other. So we're sending out animals to other cities with no accountability. When Dennis Zine is Controller, I can tell you the audience, if you give a darn about animals in this city, vote and support Dennis Zine for Controller because he's going to audit this place from top to bottom. Wendy only did a financial audit. We got to find out what's going here. There was no, no kill December.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Daniel. Okay, Sean. Sean, you're up.
Yes. Happy New Year, everybody. I want to say Happy New Year to all my fans. I attended Mayor Orl's debate this past Thursday. I listened to what my supporter, what my mayor, new mayor, has to say. Wilshire Boulevard needs to be repaid, whoever becomes mayor. I'm addressing you, I'm addressing the city, whoever becomes the new mayor, fix Wilshire Boulevard.
Well, Sean, you have Mr. Labange as my support on that request. Okay, now we're going to go to item 12. Item 12, we have two public, general public, I mean, general public comment cards on. Sean, you again, item 12, and John Walsh, item 12.
I'm sorry, I was talking to Donna Pyramid. I'm for this item, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Walsh. John, you coming up on item 12? Hand your cards in, Mr. Dude.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or go to Front Page Online. Ron K. L.A., Mayor Sam. I am really shocked at what this is here. This increases the cost to the media of a press ID. What you are trying to do here is discourage the media, not the Van Marwesh. The Van Marwesh of the LA Times is in favor of it, but the rest of us are not in favor, the other media. It is a direct slap at Conan Nolan, who just broke the other day the big Sheen story. Sheen says the mayor's a liar, and now it will cost more for the press to get their ID cards, because you want to get rid of us, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, don't go far, Mr. Walsh. We're going to call several of your items next. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Item 13, Mr. Walsh. And then after that, we'll do item 14.
Boy, it was a big discussion on that, wasn't there? Big discussion. I want the press to realize, and I don't count the Monica Lewinsky's that work here in this office, or the press's office, they're on your side and they're on the...
Let's stay on the Renescor account.
Okay, 13. This is the properties of REAP, as we said, you're doing a good job, and I want to point out Jackie Goldberg was the one who pushed REAP, but I just want you to know, there are no press here, so that's why there are no kneepads for the City Hall press. I have them for them. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, let's, Mr. Zine.
Fourth, please.
Item 12, fourth whiff. So on this item, let's open up the roll. Oh, Mr. Krikorian, I saw your, let's open up the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the appropriate time, Mr. President, I'd request that we reconsider item number 19 from Friday's agenda, council file number 12-1938, the resolution proclaiming December 18th as International Migrants Day. There are a number of speakers here today who would like to speak on the topic.
Okay. Let me take a few other agenda items, and we will definitely get to that. Let's go to item number 15. John Walsh, item 15.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighland.org. It's always a pleasure when you're up here running the meeting, I know you're not drunk. HollywoodHighlands.org, this is 15, this concerns one of the mayor's henchwomen, Mercedes Marquez. I'm not even going to go into it. She's hooked in, she's going to be gone, they're all going to be gone on June 30th. A new world is set up. The mayor's destroyed his career today with Charlie Sheen, but I just want you to point out, she used to be at the CRA, she's one of the mayor's, oh, incidentally, I just want to finish by saying, Mercedes Marquez has never had sex with the mayor. That's what distinguishes her.
Come on, stay on the, stay on the item, Mr. Walsh, that's really a low blow. That's really a low blow. Okay, on this item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now we'll move...
Excuse me, Mr. President. For item 15, the approved salary for the Housing Department General Manager is $225,149.
Okay, so let's move to the next item, which was again held special by Mr. John Walsh. Item 16, John. He passes on item 16. On that item, members, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Ms. Perry, are you ready with item 11? Okay, now we're moving to item 11. That was held special by Ms. Perry.
All right, thank you very much. If we could have representatives of Hackla come to the table while I, Mr. Brown is here. Colleagues, what I'm asking for today is that we move to substitute the Minority Report as amended. It calls for a systematic and formalized approach regarding council input and notification of actions being considered by the housing authority for the city of Los Angeles. The Minority Report suggests or supports the recommendations contained in the report for the chief legislative analyst and with the proposed amendments, does not compromise the independent authority of the housing authority or burden the city with additional liabilities, and I think it's important to say that. Since I introduced a motion in October of 2009, my office and the chief legislative analyst have worked with Hackla on an oversight structure and are in agreement regarding the amended Minority Report. Now, unfortunately, the majority report of the Housing Committee does nothing to change the current relationship between Hackla and the city, and I don't believe that report should be supported. I believe supporting the amended minority or substituted minority report is the most cost-effective approach and can be considered as the initial step in the event the council chooses to pursue direct oversight of Hackla. This is a practical approach that can be implemented immediately. Hackla is in agreement to this approach, and the city attorney also feels it's a good approach because it has not exposed the city to any additional liability. The city's relationship with Hackla is defined by a cooperation agreement in Chapter 6, of Chapter 6, Section 8 of the Administrative Code. So what I'm proposing today is that we adopt the amended Minority Report and instruct the chief legislative analyst and the city attorney to prepare amendments to the cooperation agreement that would allow council input and review of Hackla's actions. The amended cooperation agreement will require Hackla's consent and will come back to council for approval. I'm not looking for us to micromanage Hackla, rather to make sure that we have a greater engagement and understanding on what they do on a day-to-day basis. I think it would be beneficial to receive formal reports on Hackla's work plan and to know what funding sources Hackla is applying, so we don't have city departments like housing and the housing authority competing for the same limited pots of money. I think we can all agree that in these lean economic times, we need stronger coordination between city agencies, and establishing a formal review process will lead to greater transparency and coordination of resources. So again, I am asking to substitute the Minority Report, and I use the term substitute the Minority Report as directed by the City Clerk's Office for, I guess, technical reasons. But I would like a yes vote on the substitution of this Minority Report as amendment. And Mr. Brown is here with his colleague to answer any of your questions.
Excuse me, Mr. President, there is a second on for Ms. Perry's motion to substitute.
May I have a second, please?
Yes, go ahead, respond.
What was the question?
Yeah, what was the question?
Well, I don't know if they're questions for them. I know I do have other members on the queue. I have Mr. Alakon, followed by Mr. Rosendahl.
Council members, as you are aware, we had quite a controversy with Hackla about a year and a half, two years ago, that Ms. Hahn and I championed, Mr. Zine later took on, and we eventually removed the general manager from Hackla. The fact of the matter is that the mayor appoints the commissioners, the city council ratifies those appointments, and yet we have very little authority, in fact, almost none, when it comes to overseeing the management of Hackla. So I stand in support of Ms. Perry's motion because I believe that this gives us a small modicum of ability to look into Hackla with a more regular basis. And where the general public is under the impression, because of our appointment authority, that we have control of Hackla, then we need to be much more informed about Hackla and its operations and those people who, the tens of thousands of people who are affected by Hackla. They should be able to have the ability to come to us with questions and concerns. I don't have any problem with the current administration, I want to make it very clear. However, I think that if we're going to have the appointing authority, that we should have the, we should have the ability to look into this. I want to thank the CLA for making these very good recommendations. Recommendation number two, by the way, is not included in Ms. Perry's substitute motion, would actually invoke state law to dissolve Hackla. Nobody's going to that point and then having the city council take over the administration of it. I think, I don't think we're at that point yet, and I don't think, I don't contemplate that we would ever get there. But I think that Hackla needs to know that the city council is engaged, is watching, and is concerned. And we do that on behalf of our constituents who are greatly affected by Hackla's activities. So with that, I hope that we will support Ms. Perry's substitute motion. I think this takes us in the right direction.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Perry, for your leadership on this. As we all know, the devil is in the details and following up. I'm the one who shouted at the council floor, "Where's Rudy?" Remember?
Remember.
Now, the good thing about Rudy, he came through with 25 vouchers at that point, and that helped me get through a terrible crisis in what I'm trying to create. And I'm very grateful to him and to you and to Steve and to everybody there in the shop that made that happen. I just need that commitment going forward. That's why we, the council, need to review and be part of this process. It can't be a distant island, especially when we learn situations that have happened there that are less than becoming for a group to be running around and running up big expenses and stuff like that. So the "Where's Rudy" switches into supporting 11A, which gives us some teeth in this, some fight in the game. And therefore, I think it's very important that you bring yourselves to the table and be held accountable by us. Do we get accountability from you on that?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. So let's make sure that happens, and I need more vouchers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President.
Oh, as amended, we're voting on the item?
No, first, um...
Three votes or two? I thought it was two votes, Mr. City Attorney. So I want you in the microphone to tell everybody that the president was right and it's two votes, not three votes.
The, well, there actually is three. There is a motion to substitute, and then there's a motion to amend, and then the, the item 11 as a whole.
I'm livid with you. I just want to go on the record saying that I'm livid with the city attorney. So let's vote, let's take these three votes per deon, starting out with the amendment. Is that correct?
No, the first vote would be on whether to substitute the Minority Report for the, excuse me, whether to consider substituting the Minority Report.
Okay, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, what is the next vote?
So next is on actually substituting the Minority Report for the Majority Report.
Open the roll.
Substituting the Minority Report for the Majority Report.
Let's open, let's begin to vote on that. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And there's one more vote per the city attorney.
And now on the amendment, the 11A. So the Minority Report as amended by motion 11A.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that is approved. That brings us where on the agenda?
To general public comment.
Okay, now we're gonna, no, I think we'll do one general public comment card. In fact, no, let's go to Mr. Krikorian. He had made a request earlier. So, Mr. Kretz, do you want to pick it up from here, or, and Mr. Labonges, if I could see you? Oh, Mr. Reyes, I'm sorry. That wasn't even close if I called you Kretz.
He looked over here, I go, what?
And I wondered why I received that weird, weird look from you.
That was funny. Thank you, Council Presidents. Colleagues, United Nations had started...
Excuse me, Mr. President. Before Mr. Reyes begins, council should vote on whether to reconsider this item.
Okay, this vote is for reconsideration. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
So that item is now before us.
Thank you very much, and the queue up again. The United Nations had submitted resolution and have supported International Migrants Day, and today we have folks who have been strong advocates for ensuring that all human beings, all folks who have been part of this great tradition, the immigration experience is so special in the United States, that's what's built up this country, has now put into focus the need to address issues that are affecting every one of us, but more importantly, those who are impacted, their quality of life because of these immigration laws and these anti-immigrant environments. I'd like to call up the, our guests who came to speak on that, and if we can. Angela Sombra, if you can come on up, and the speakers, you can introduce yourself and let the council know why this is so important.
Yes. Buenos dias, good morning, honorable City Council. My name's Angela Sombra. I am the president of the Board of Directors of the Central American Resource Center, Caresen, and I'm also here on behalf of the National Alliance of Latin American and Caribbean Communities. I want to thank City Council members, Reyes and Jan Perry, for sponsoring the resolution recognizing December 18th as International Migrants Day. It is very appropriate for the city of Los Angeles to recognize the United Nations proclamation of 200, since Los Angeles is one of the most diverse cities in the United States. Fifty percent of the workforce is made up of immigrants. And there are, like I said, 200 languages are spoken in the city. The resolution before you recognizes the socio-political, economic, and cultural contributions that immigrants make to the great city of Los Angeles, which we proudly call our home. We want to thank you for your support. Thank you.
Good morning. To leave our present and look forward to our next generation's future, we must value our past. Good morning, council members. My name is Sara Zapata-Mijares, president and founder of Mundo Maya Foundation, a Maya Yucate Cultural and Educational Organization based in downtown Los Angeles, and a member of the Red Mexicana de Lideres en Organizaciones, my national organization. Thank you, council members, Reyes and Councilmember Jan Perry, for supporting the institutionalizing or recognizing December 18th as the International Migrants Day. City of Los Angeles is the capital of diversity and multiculturalism as we see it, and we ask you for your support. And also, I want to acknowledge that the great example that we have in this beautiful city of L.A. with the international sister cities that Councilmember Tom Labonge very grateful conducts. You know, I'm a member of the Mexico City and Los Angeles Sister Cities, so please support this International Migrants Day, December 18th.
Morning, honorable City Council. I am Karen Fernandez, Youth Coordinator of the International Front of Indigenous Organization, FIOB. In my case, migration was not an option. It was a result of my grandparents' work, who was a Brazero in the 1980s. It is important to recognize the International Migrants Day because they represent an essential part of the intellectual and economic growth to this country. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Francisco Moreno. On behalf of the Council of Mexican Federations in North America, we thank Congress members Reyes and Perry. Thank you for your support. Thank you for this.
I just want to take a moment and thank Councilor Krikorian for introducing this motion today as a substitute motion. I appreciate his work. And with that, colleagues, in this day of need to address immigration reform, it's important to understand the contributions and the sacrifice that has been felt by all migrants throughout the world, but more importantly, how it's felt here in California with all the different migratory patterns that occur when you have a harvest, when we have food on our table, and then when you look at all other industries that are opportunistic with the labor that is there when it comes to lumber industry throughout the country and many other industries in our economy. So it's important to understand the significance of this day. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, for your leadership. Mr. Garcetti, for your leadership.
Much, Mr. Reyes and Ms. Perry. Wanted to thank as well the coalition that's here today, and thank you for making this. In the past years, I've been very happy to make a similar presentation. And, you know, one thing that I'd say is this year, let's make sure it's a year not just of recognition, but of action. In particular, here in the city of Los Angeles, to continue to bring back what we had at one point, which was an Office of Immigrant Affairs here in the mayor's office, which would be a great thing, like New York City has. Two, to push hard on immigration reform, and it doesn't matter whether you're Democrat or Republican. I say to my Republican friends, this is your time to act. Three, to continue to keep our Dreamers first and foremost. I was with a group of Dreamers just two days ago. They are the civil rights heroes of our moment right now, who are pushing forward, and we thank them for that. And then four, also looking at what we can do to look at our indigenous cultures that come here too, which are sometimes lost cultures within our immigrant communities, you know, who speak sometimes Spanish as a second language, or who come from Mong cultures or some of the tribes, the Hill tribes of Southeast Asia. Those folks as well need to have a voice even within our immigrant rights community sometimes, and the city of Los Angeles can do a lot to reach out. So let's make it a year of action. Thank you so much for all that you do, and I know that you have a very strong group here that wants to push that forward. And the Matricul Consular, which now we can maybe turn into a city ID card as well, will be a great step forward. You can count on my support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Ms. Perry, for her leadership.
Thank you very much, and it's been a joy to be able to participate in this effort. And I was just sharing an article about another major American city, Chicago, and their New Americans Plan. And I just wanted to read a paragraph about this because it could be a very good template for what we're attempting to do here, because we have a lot of pieces of that, but we could eventually pull it together in a plan. This plan highlights the potential economic impact when the city supports the creation and expansion of immigrant-owned businesses, develops, attracts, and retains talent and expertise from other countries, and aims to bolster the city's status as a vibrant and welcoming international city. And it's divided into three categories: our growth, our youth, and our communities. And it focuses on economic opportunities, the development of human capital, educational issues, public safety issues, city services, and civic engagement. This is the way you build a city, and I hope that we can work towards creating a plan like that here for ourselves in Los Angeles, so that everyone's community is included.
Thank you, Ms. Perry and this distinguished group. No other speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, so ordered. Thank you very much. Next time, Sergeant, we're going to call on public comment at this hour. Donna Periman is our first public comment speaker.
Yeah, I'm Donna Periman. 3-1-1, what a joke. I can't even get the music. Basic signal every time while others listen to music. Anyway, I wanted to know that Miriam Vogler is with her sister Diane in Shiva mourning for their father. Rabbi Morris Firestone, Rabbi Encantor passed before the new Christian year. He will be sorely missed, but I'll let Miriam say more when she is back. I will not stop telling you to reopen video conferencing van ayes. You need to reopen it now. You need to reopen it now. Both Councilman woman Jan Perry and Councilman Eric Garcetti need the San Fernando Valley vote, and reopening would show you care for the Valley. You too have the ability to reopen it. The others running for mayor do not have. Anyway, I can see 10 closed stores on Ventura Boulevard in Tarzana, from Reseda to Wilbur. The businesses are closed. 10 businesses not favored like the car dealerships are, not to mention a one burnt-out furniture store, which plans to reopen. We need 10 small stores, again. Who will help the small stores and small businesses? Not redevelopment, but development, privately-owned businesses and stores. What makes America great, what makes America great are these small stores. Reopen video conferencing in van eyes, encourage the Valley to speak. And let's see, and we need to be for the city employees and remember they're working for us and to be able to give the, you know, they should have good benefits so that they'll stay here. And lastly, I want to say, I want to have Eric Garcetti for mayor, because we can't lose him.
Donna, thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Dahlhouse.
I haven't spoken, and there's seven seconds gone already.
Get it all. Keep talking, you'll get it all.
Can you say everything in two minutes, Mr. Labonge? I don't think so.
I wait for you.
Every time you speak, it takes you like three hours to say one little thing, you know? It's called politics. Me, I say it all in two minutes. Everybody needs a home. We are already charting outer space, and everybody's homeless. What is wrong with us? Are we idiots? Yes, we are. There has to be a way to create a society where everybody has a home, and nobody gets beat down by the police and City Hall for being homeless. Go talk to the homeless out there. I do every day. They are saying you are running a BS society where you spend billions on projects that go nowhere, and you leave everybody homeless. You take old people's houses for a couple of thousand dollars just to pay your taxes. You know? They couldn't afford to pay your tax, so you take their house and you throw them out on the street. You live in a homeless-making society. We all do, and we need to change it. I have a formula. All you, should I call you the I word? Need to read my book. We need a formula. It's called the United World of Free and Clear. We need a formula to house the whole world and stop calling each other by different names. You Japanese, you Chinese, you Russian, you idiot.
Next speaker will be Mr. Brian Fortson.
All right. How you doing? My name's Brian Fortson. I was walking down the street in my community when a racist Hispanic gang member tried to assault me with a deadly weapon, and he, and he's...
He chased you with a knife.
He chased you with a knife.
Yelling, "Nigga, I'm gonna kill you."
Yelling, "Nigga, I'm gonna kill you."
Repeatedly.
Repeatedly. And I don't gambling, you know what I'm saying, and stuff like that.
And the detective.
And detective from the 77 Division, he didn't act on it, and...
The detective was covering up for him.
Okay. And the detective was covering up for him from the 77 Division Police Station Department.
And his name is?
His name is...
Officer O.R.
Officer O.R.
O.N.
O.N.
O.Z.
O.Z.
Covering up for him.
And he's covering up for him, and we'd like some help, because, you know, I feel...
It's not the first time. It's racially motivated.
This happened, um, there was a, is it? It's happened numbers of times, you know?
It's not the first incident.
Okay.
I'm gonna hold the clock for just a second. Hold the clock. If I could ask you to take both hands and put it right on that podium right there. Stand there and feel comfortable. You, Brian, you, I want you to feel comfortable right there. Put your hands on the podium, okay? And just tell us what you want us to do in your public comment, please, okay? And I have two more cards of people, gentlemen to your left. Okay, run the clock.
Okay. I want to talk to somebody about this because I've been threatening for my life, you know what I'm saying? And this guy, this Hispanic racist gang member is out on the loose, you know what I'm saying? So I'm trying my best not to hurt him, because, you know, I don't play that, you know what I'm saying? I don't gambling, you see what I'm saying? So I'm trying my best not to put hands on him. But I would like some help on this, you know what I'm saying? I'm upset right now because it's getting on my last nerves, and I'm tired.
Thank you, Brian. Let me ask you a question. Your address is not under, you know what district did you live in?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy, what?
Seventy-seven.
What council district? What council district members? If someone could help this, Ms. Perry, thank you. You could find out.
Just relax. Okay, I'm trying to listen. Okay. I'm, that's how I talk. So, look, shut this off.
All right, Ms. Perry, if we could, I'm gonna call on the other speakers, Brian. And you can go to the ropes, and we can get this information to try to help you. We also have a Mr. Hip-Hop Talks and Ms. Hip-Hops Talks. Would you like to speak? And if you could speak at the ropes on the side, that would be great. Thank you.
If the sick racist Hispanic gang members are not held accountable for the racist attacks they commit against African-Americans, especially African-American men, it's bound to lead to more bloodshed. Due to the fact that having confidence in the authorities to help only enables and empowers the racist, bloodthirsty barbarians, because the Hispanic gang members know the mentality of the racist majority that are in place, to hold them accountable will see to it that they are not held accountable. Hate crime protection does not apply to African-Americans. It's well-known that Hispanic gang members attack African-American men as a gang initiation, ritual blood sacrifice. The racially motivated hate crimes are not being classified as just that, hate crimes. Question: Why is there such a small number of African-Americans employed in the entire judicial system? The answer is that it's a convenient and covert way to target and victimize African-Americans and get away with it by keeping African-Americans out. District Attorney Jackie Lacy, we need your help and ask that you look into the way that the hate crimes against African-Americans are being handled and not classified as hate crimes by the majority. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hip-Hop Talks.
Okay, there's a covert conspiracy going on here. Okay, the authorities are well aware of the fact that Hispanic gang members, it's a code of conduct to be racist towards African-Americans. They run us out of our communities. They did the same thing out there in the city of Azusa. They were targeting African-Americans, trying to run them out of the city of Azusa. I have the facts here. I'm speaking about facts here, okay? And it's not, that's not an isolated incident. It's happening all over Los Angeles, all over the county, all over this whole state. And it's being ignored, and each and every one of the body here is, are enablers, because you're ignoring the fact. Now, my son, we came up here, me and my fiancee, now, you remember us? We came out here a couple, about a year ago, in regards to a hate crime that was committed against us, and it was a cover-up. I talked to the FBI. I called them up and told them what was going on down here, that nobody's doing anything about it. I'm letting you know what's going on outside these doors. These racially motivated attacks are being waged against African-American males by these Hispanic gang members, and it's well-known that they're racist. They have to be racist in order to be a Hispanic gang member. And they better honor that code or still be targeted and victimized themselves, and stop being taken into consideration. Our Fourteenth Amendment rights are being violated when it comes down to equal protection. It's not funny. This is not funny. Our lives are in danger. Okay, we come in here, we're not, we're trying to do it the civilized, legal way. We come in here, letting you know what's going on outside these doors. We're not gonna, we're not trying to resort to streak justice, okay? So they can say, oh, you should have called the police, turn around, put your hands behind your back. You don't take the law into your own hands. We're coming here, and we're trying to do things in a civilized manner. I talked to the FBI, and they're gonna look into it.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is John Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. We ask you, you know, you're on TMZ today. There's one, two, three, four, five, seven members here. There's no quorum. And incidentally, the people who spoke, the African-Americans, there was no closed captioning for you. There was no, they took off closed captioning for you. That's racism. And also, they took away the black man who was running the meeting and put a white man in, okay? Just want all you black people to understand. Now, TMZ, Google TMZ, Vera Gosa and Sheen. An hour ago, Charlie Sheen broke his silence. He said he was, he was partying with the mayor all night, exactly what I said Friday when you tried to arrest me. And now it's all over. They had a poll. So what Charlie Sheen is saying is either the mayor of Los Angeles is lying, or I am lying. So they had an online poll that's going on. Over 30,000 people in the first, first hour have voted. Ninety-five percent believe the mayor of the city of Los Angeles is lying, and 5% believe that Charlie Sheen is lying. Now, if you vote, it'll be 5% believe Charlie Sheen is lying, plus you 15. Now, I'm telling you right now, and I'm the only one who'll say it, that club is owned by the Zetas Drug Cartel. Everybody knows that. There were DEA agents down there. Everybody knows that. The mayor on Conan Nolan's show on NBC, and I want to thank him, is the only reporter, broke the silence and asked the mayor a question. This garbage over here, these LA Times reporters and that 103-year-old guy, Rick Orlov, they are all garbage and have done nothing. I'm telling you right now, the whole world is watching, and you say nothing. And I'm telling you about the Zetas Drug Cartels, they made it murder children, and they may murder me for what I said. And if I am murdered, I want the DEA to investigate it, and I want to say right now, it was indirectly caused by the mayor of the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much. That completes public comment. Public comment is by rule an opportunity for the public to say anything that's on their mind. We thank all those...
Within the jurisdiction of the city council.
Within the jurisdiction of the city of Los Angeles. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. That completes our public comment. And Madam Clerk, what's next?
Council has motions for post-narrative referral.
So ordered.
That clears the desk.
Any announcements, members? Mr. Reyes?
Yes, I'd like to invite my colleagues and the public to an art exhibit here on the bridge that connects City Hall with City Hall East. The title is called "The Bridge, El Puente," and it is a pictorial description of the cultural and social history of a diverse Salvadoran community in Los Angeles. The work is an ongoing project that currently consists of 25 canvases. The title "The Bridge" was chosen because of each individual piece of this work, contributed component of a visual representation of the bridge. Again, you get to witness the talent of Francisco Mejia, who is the artist, and some beautiful work, and I'd invite you to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Also, tonight, for those who were interested in the Echoplex in Mr. Garcetti's district, there's the anniversary, 29th anniversary salute to Elvis Presley. Today's Elvis Presley's birthday, and people from around the world come to the Echoplex at Echo Park and salute the king of rock and roll. No more announcements. Adjourned motions, please rise. Mr. Rothendorf.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, today I want to adjourn in memory of Terry Masika. Terry was the son-in-law of two of my dearest friends, Louise and Ernie Frankel, their sister-in-law, Ellen Schwartz, and of course, their daughter Sharon Franklin. Terry passed away after a long battle with pancreatic cancer on December 18th. He was 64 years old. Terry was born in 1948 in Coatesville, Maryland. After graduating from Hargrave Military Academy in Chatham, Virginia, he attended Indiana University, where he was on the track team. He was an All-American and won the Big Ten Championship in the 400-meter dash in 1970. In 1972, he married Sharon Frankel, a schoolteacher whom he met while he was working as a substitute teacher in Los Angeles. The couple have three children, Michael, Ally, and Jennifer, and settled in Hunt Valley, a suburb of Baltimore. An expert on international property damages, Terry co-founded Innovex, a Maryland company that specializes in accounting, financial consulting, and intellectual property management services. He was involved in some of the largest patent verdicts and settlements in the country. He served on Apple's team in the recent verdict against Samsung, and was an expert witness for the NTP Incorporated in their settlement agreement on the 2002 BlackBerry Patent suit. Aside from his professional life, Terry also coached his children's baseball, softball, and soccer teams. He was a gardener and enjoyed fishing and hiking and playing the piano. In addition to his wife and children, Terry is survived by his brother John, his sister Jill, his mother Olamay, and 11 adoring nieces and nephews. He was a fiercely loyal friend and a much admired advisor. He touched the lives of many. Generous with his knowledge, gracious with his time, Terry was a legendary mentor, role model, and father figure to many. May he rest in peace.
Thank you very much. Ms. Perry?
Thank you, Mr. Labonge, and I'm actually sure you're going to do this, the adjournment in memory of Hugh Houser.
Hugh Houser, yes.
Yeah, so I'll add to that.
Thank you very much.
Just want to say, actually, I'll say it now. I'll just miss his Tennessee lilt.
That's right.
There's nothing like it.
Nobody like Hugh Houser. Hugh Houser, who was born in Tennessee and was a United States Marine, got in the television business, went from a local station in Tennessee on to New York City, and then made his way west to Los Angeles in 1981. He was on Channel 2, then KNXT, and he was somewhat down here. He was a human interest reporter at the time and caught the people of the city. I met him when I was a deputy for the late, great John Fraun, took him up to Griffith Park, and the first thing he did when he did his show, Dennis, he complained he had to hike so far up that hill to get up to the top of Mount Hollywood, but he got a wonderful interview with Charlie Turner, who was then about 87 years old and who cared for Dante's view in Griffith Park. These were one of the thousands and thousands and thousands of shows that Hugh Houser did. He left commercial television, where you're stymied by the three-minute sound that they only give, and went to public television and created quite a show at KCET. Then there was the visiting with Hugh Houser, or the other programs that they had throughout. And then he expanded that to the statewide public broadcast system, where he went throughout the state. And just the night before last, I watched him on KCET, and he was in Del Norte County talking to a couple who ran a lighthouse and making it so interesting, and he was so flabbergasted that the tide sometimes isolated them for up to two weeks that they were on this island, because years ago, we abandoned our lighthouses, and public-spirited citizens took them over. He truly was an angel in the city of angels and did much to promote Los Angeles. He died at 67 years old of prostate cancer. He has one sister that survived by, and he will be missed by all. I am going to be having something up at the observatory, hopefully, for the public to remember the great Hugh Houser, who truly was the one who made everything interesting. And as many different people who are in this room, as many different pillars that are in this room, as many different lights, as many different microphones, he would make each and... each and every one of those objects interesting. And the best thing he did, Sharon, is he listened to people, and he'd take that microphone, and Louis and all his other cameramen, he'd take that microphone and let the people talk and describe. He truly is a saint, and God bless the memory, take it too young, of Hughl Hauser. And Ms. Perry, I just want you to exonerate that, because you worked so closely on your efforts in downtown with Hughl, was a big booster of downtown.
I had a great time with him and with Tom Gilmore once, where we, I think we staged a mock fight out on the street, and he was just hilarious, and, you know, it was very difficult to upstage Tom Gilmore, but he did, and he did it with grace and with charm. And it made it special.
Very special. I got to introduce Tom to Hughl, which was good. And Hughl's come to our family home, knew my mother, loved my mother, loved people, which is so special. Mr. Rosado, my mother loved you. Please say a few words.
In fact, Tom got the word from his mother that he should support me for this council seat, and Tom came out of nowhere, and he said, "You got to do it for my mother, my mother, my mother," who was one of your biggest fans. Well, look, Hughl Hauser was a friend of mine. We became close over the years. We had a chance to do what we love to do best, which is listen and learn, and try to develop something of value to inform, educate, and connect people in a society that seems to not get enough real news, just soundbite bloody journalism rather than real, genuine, informative pieces. So he and I became birds of a feather, frankly, and we became friends on lots of different levels. I knew he was going through this moment as he was going through it, and my prayers were with him through it. He has left a mark that we all can learn from and should learn from and continue to learn from in the years ahead. God bless you, Hughl Hauser. May you rest in peace. We're all with you, brother. You were with us. You shared your life with us for 67 years, and we're very grateful for that. Thank you for having that positive energy, that positive, hopeful attitude, and the genuine curiosity to learn, and learning is the key for all of us in a society. We need to learn, we need to educate ourselves. We need not to be biased or prejudicial, or in any way hurt the character of another person. We should love ourselves and our neighbors as ourselves, and don't judge. It covers all of us in this great planet, of which Hughl Hauser was a major inspiration to all of us. May he rest in peace, brother.
All members on Hughl Hauser, and that completes our meeting today. Go ahead. Every day's a blessing. God bless the city of Los Angeles.